As Fayette County School Board Member.
As Fayette County School Board Member.
State of Indiana.
State of Indiana.
According to law.
According to law.
Into the best of my ability.
Into the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
For those of you in the audience, we had three board members who were newly elected. Ms. Kerschner, Mr. Hunt are, were re-elected, and then Mr. Perkins is new on the board. So when they are elected in the fall, then they are sworn in before our first official meeting. So I appreciate Judge Branstadder coming over and taking care of that for us. And Mrs. McCreary for her help with.
We will now call the meeting of the Fayette County School Corporation Board of School Trustees to order. We are here at the Administration Building. It's Tuesday, January 15th. It is 6:30 PM. And I'd like to ask everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, tonight, we have a little different type of meeting. We're going to have a couple of short meetings before we go into our regular meeting because we elect board offices tonight, and we also have a finance board meeting. So we're board of finance meeting. So just bear with us, those of you who are here and observing us. So the first thing I'd like to ask for is a motion to approve the agendas as submitted and amended. Do I have a motion?
I so move.
Thank you, Ann. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Chris. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now, we will move on to the election of school board officers. And the way this will work is if somebody wants to make a nomination for either a slate or an individual office, then we will accept those nominations as they come in. And then, once we have that slate nominated, then we will go back and ask for a vote on that slate, as it is. So I'd like to begin to ask if anybody wants to make a nomination or nominate a slate. Chris.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion for a slate of officers the following. Leslie Jacobs is president. Lori Savoy is vice president. Ann Kerschner as secretary. And Mark Beard as assistant secretary.
Okay, thank you for that nomination. Do we hear any other nominations on the floor? Seeing none, we will take that nomination of the slate and now turn around to see if we can have a motion to approve this slate of officers for the coming year.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Andy. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mark. The others chimed in. Any discussions? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We will now briefly adjourn to start the finance meeting and also to switch seats. Oh, do I have to?
A motion.
Yeah, I need a motion to adjourn, excuse me.
I so move.
Thank you, Ann. Do I hear a second? Thank you, Lori. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. First meeting adjourned.
Okay, I'll call the meeting to order for the board of finance. We've got a memo. Memo's from Mrs. Janie Callan Tollitt. It states, "In accordance with IC 5-13-7-6, each local board of finance shall meet annually after the first Monday and on or before the last day of January. At the annual meeting, the board of finance shall do the following. Number one, elect from the board's membership a president and a secretary. Number two, review a summary of the financial institutions with whom the political subdivision invested money during the previous calendar year. And number three, review the overall investment policy of the political subdivision." And of course, we have some attachments here, which we will have Mrs. Callan Tollitt go over. But first, we are going to move on to the election of the positions for the president and the secretary. So this time, I will open the floor for nominations for the office of president. Or if we would like to do a slate, as we did previously, we can do that as well. So do I hear a motion for either individual or slate?
I move that board member Yarim be president.
And hearing any of those nominations for board president? Okay, we'll make a motion then for me to become the president of the board of finance.
I'll second that.
Well, who made the motion?
Mark. I'll second.
And all those in favor, raise your right hand. Any opposed? Possible. We'll move on to the office and secretary. And the same thing, we'll open the floor for a nomination for the office of position of secretary, I should say.
I'll nominate Chris.
Do I have to move?
I don't know.
I'll second that.
Is that, are we motioning or are we just nominating? We're nominating. I just nominated, so now it's a motion.
Yeah, can I hear a motion then for the nomination of Mr. Chris Hunt for the position of secretary?
I so move.
Second.
Second. Any other, do I have to ask for any other nominations?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any other nominations for the position of secretary? Here we go. Let's see, we'll vote by raising your right hand. And any opposed? Unfortunately, yeah.
That's half of it.
Is that official or?
Okay, at this time, I'll pass it over to Mrs. Janie for the, to the investment review.
Sure. You know, Chris, this is the only thing you have to do. I mean, the whole year. It is more a formality than anything, an old statute. So, you know, and he has the tough job of working through the nomination process. Anyhow, in your packet, you have a couple of documents. The first one is a summary of our bank balances at the end of each month. Most of our monies are held at Main Source, except for our CD investments. Those are identified through a trust at Main Source. However, the investments are with an actual bank. Main Source just asks as a trust to move the money in and out as the investments mature. We started the year with, in January, at the end of January, about $23.2 million. At the end of the year, we ended with $20,600. So we're still very financially stable. Our operating balance as of December was a little over $6.6 million. Normally, we don't keep that much money in the bank account, but we did have two CDs come due in December, that I wanted to keep those liquid. We're going to have the solar project to be paying for, and we're going to have some of the construction costs to be paying for. So until I really get a good timeline on Spartan Activities Center, we're going to keep a little more money liquid than we have before. Once I know what the good timeline is for the construction start and after we've paid off the solar project, then I may start doing some shorter-term investments or looking at those that mature in February. Can we be putting some of those out a little bit further? We currently have about, just about $14 million invested. Those interest rates range from 1.63% all the way up to 3.204%. So we're getting a pretty healthy return. Last year, we had budgeted, last year being calendar year 2018, investment income of about $60,000 because our rates of return had been pretty low. We actually took in $211,000 in interest income. We did pay $17,000 last year for UMBAL to manage our investments, but we are seeing a great return with that change that we made in June of 2017, away from Fifth Third Bank and putting that with the UMBAL group. I will tell you, most of our CDs are held by Lake City Bank. We do have one with Memorial Harris Bank. In regard to the investment policy, we're not recommending any changes to it. If we did need, we'll go to the policy committee. It was greatly expanded in June of 2017, so there's, you know, I don't think there's any need to make any changes to our investment policy at this time. I'll be happy to answer any questions that we'll make.
I think, just to clarify, we've already been over this, but I know I've had some questions in the community about paying for the solar panels. We've obviously, because we're so, we have such amount of financial liquidity, we decided to kind of just take, just pay for it, but then get a positive net cash flow at the end of the year. That is still estimated to occur at the end of December of 2019, is that correct? Still being the positive, I should say, by the reduction of the electric bill. Is that correct?
If you look at it from the standpoint of paying $2.5 million this year.
I understand that, but the payments, I'm saying, like, when you pay yourself back, you're still in a positive for operating net, considering we were to pay ourselves back.
Correct, and we have not presented the board with a plan for repayment.
Okay.
We're kind of all over the place. And so, you know, it's, in my opinion, it's six of one, half dozen of another. You can schedule those payments, should we choose to. The other side of it is, you just moved money from the operation fund, like we used to do. When you had excess funds, you could move it to the rainy day at that time. We haven't had a recent finance committee meeting, but really, that might be a topic that we would discuss at that time. Do you want to do a structured repayment? Because, you know, we asked for word input. There were a lot of thoughts, no real concrete plan to repay that. But yes, we, the plan is that we will, you know, still experience those savings. We'll save more, not paying the interest.
Correct. Yeah, and obviously, too, I mean, it's, it's, it's an investment, not really expensive by putting in the solar panel, because it's going to generate, over the course of 20 years, 30 years, you know, five, six million dollars in essentially saved.
More than that at this point.
Oh, really? Okay.
With financing it ourselves, we'll see more savings.
That's excellent. Yeah, that's great.
But I think your point is well-taken, to make sure that the public is aware that the payment of, for the solar panels is coming out of the savings.
Yes.
On the electrical usage, which I think was the point you're trying to get across.
Yeah, I just didn't.
Yeah.
No, that verbalized it very well, or put it into words very well. Yeah, I think that's excellent, so.
It's really like, you go buy a car, you can finance it for 5%. Or you pay cash, and then you reap the savings from that, I guess, in a simplified way.
But then also, the car would be making you money by using it. So that's what I'm saying, in this analogy, with the search that pay it, we save the interest by not having to take out a loan, but then we also are generating revenue for us. So, I mean, it's not like we're buying something, it's sitting there, and, you know, I mean, it's going to turn a positive for us, so. All right. If there are no further questions, I'll ask for a motion for adjournment.
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second. I'll second. Okay. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. And any opposed? And meeting adjourned.
Okay, then we'll move right on to our next meeting. I'm going to call the public business meeting to order. And we are going to begin tonight with a presentation by Frazee Elementary School.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you Cabinet and School Board for having us tonight to showcase a little bit of what we are doing here at Frazee. I want to share with you that our learning takes place not only in the classroom, but also through extracurricular activities that we have many of, such as Health Club, Insiders Club, Primary and Intermediate Choirs, Primary and Intermediate Art Classes, Sphero Heroes, which is really popular, so popular that many students ask for their own Sphero for Christmas and receive them and brought them in to show me and all excited. We also have Art Club, Robotics and Archery Club, and Inventors Club beginning in February. And these clubs are a really important part of our school. It's a good time for students to socialize, but also learn things in and outside the classroom. Today, I have with me Mrs. Hobbs. She is sixth grade teacher. She is also our high ability teacher leader. And here, I also have Mr. Rob Malloy, which he so graciously came. And he is hoping to have future position here at Fayette County, hopefully Frazee Elementary. And while we get that. Thank you, Mr. Circlavet. He is doing a fine job, and I'm really excited about his future with Fayette County Schools someplace. And I also have Mrs. Hobbs, who's going to now do some background, just a little bit of background, a couple of minutes about her students.
This is Lexi Gibson and Tyler Morris. In my classroom, we dedicate 60 minutes a week to a product of their passion. And they take those 60 minutes and they use them wisely, and they come up with great projects. They had projects from coding a whole video game to creating a comic book. And so, in the 60 minutes for a semester, they just take time to do what they want to do and to research what they want to research. And Lexi and Tyler have been chosen to present their abbreviated first semester Genius Hour projects.
What I just signed is, hello, my name is Lexi, I'll do it again. And sign language is really complicated because D and F are very similar, and so are E and S because they both use the fist and thumb. I was watching a video of a girl signing a song to my favorite movie, Coraline, and that's when I really thought I wanted to do sign language for my Genius Hour. And so now, I'm going to show you the alphabet. A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, and Z. And so now, I would like to sign a part of the song of All I Want for Christmas Is You Buy, Mariah Carey. Thank you. Defy merchandise by Tyler Morris. Ever since I started watching YouTube, I saw that content creators made their own merchandise, and I wanted to be like them, so I went and did it. Started a own business. I'm learning to run my own business with my merchandise. Mom helped me calculate how much the shirts would cost, materials and other expenses I would have to create my business with. I've learned a lot about getting my merchandise on the internet and found it would be easier to just sell my product locally first. I hope to make $250 in profit by next winter break, or winter break of 2019. I would like to use the profit to grow my business by getting shirts and shelves to store the shirts and materials to make the shirts. I'll be selling the shirts for $15, however, I will have a no refund policy due to the customizations of the product. And here's my teacher's shirt I made for her. She has the red shirt with white fire, and she chose to have an H in the fire. For the customizations, you can choose what letter you want in the fire. The colors of the shirts and flames are blue, yellow, black, white, and red, and the letter inside the flame, you can also customize to be what you want.
I thought it was really interesting. When he first started his project, this was not his branding. The fire flame with the T, and it was not his flame branding. It was a T with a lightning through it. Want to tell him what happened with that?
So I was researching more on it, and I figured out that it was already taken by an LED light company.
So are you going to have to patent this?
What?
How are you going to be careful that nobody else takes your design?
Because hopefully, when I grow it more, I can figure out how to post it on the internet.
How do you plan on marketing your T-shirts so everybody knows about your products?
I'll be making business cards.
She'd love to get you on Shark Tank.
Are you seeking investors?
I'll say yes.
Or volunteer.
Well, I'm sure your, sure your mom or your parents or somebody should help you start maybe like an Instagram page or a Facebook page. That would be a good start. Well, you can only start, and maybe, like I say, have your parents help you, but, you know, it's a good way to put your T-shirts up and, you know, maybe go through there. I'm sure if you, if you did that and word got around, you'd have no problem in your $250 profit margin. Good job.
Good job, guys.
Thank you so much.
Well, that was certainly great to hear about. It was fun.
Yeah, yeah, unspreads your time, learn, do what you want to do. That's great. And the sign language.
Oh, that was so cool.
That is, that is so, because.
That's hard.
I've seen kids with so many different disabilities that use signing because it's a universal way to communicate.
Yeah, I think that's.
Be interesting to see if she wants to.
Okay. We will resume our meeting. Now, it's time for patron comments on agenda items. Seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda, which includes the approval of minutes from the regular business meeting of 12:11:18, the personnel report, retirements, resignations, leaves of absences, et cetera, approval of the December 2018 claims, number 51932 to 52199, the appointment of the corporation treasurer and deputy treasurer, financial expenditure goals, disposal of surplus technology, and the 2019 conflict of interest. Also included, acceptance of donations, a donation of $1,000 from Performance Services for support of the Fayette County School Corporation Title I preschool program, a donation of $600 from Capa-Cappa Sigma Sorority for elementary health assistance and the needs of the students.
Quick question for you, Madam President. I apologize, I should have made my request when we accepted the gen at the beginning of the meeting, but in the personnel report, my wife is obviously resigning from her position, so I'd like to abstain from that voting.
Okay.
I don't know that, I'm sure Mr. Collins can help us with the process of pointing that out. And I can, I would like to vote on the other things, but, you know, the personnel report, I'm not able to.
Okay, so let's, let's, can we pull out the personnel report? Okay, I'm going to pull out the personnel report. And we are going to look at the consent agenda for those other one, two, three, four, five, six, seven bullet items, six bullet items, minus the personnel report, and for the acceptance of the donations. So I'd like to hear a motion to accept the consent agenda minus the personnel report.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Lori. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dennis. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now, I will ask for a motion to approve the personnel report.
I'll so move.
Thank you, Ann. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mark. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay. Thank you, Andy.
You're welcome.
Now, we'll move on to action items, the personnel report. Mr. Circlavet.
Thank you. Recommendation for employment for certified staff, Ashton Fee, temporary contract for elementary teaching position at Frazee. Classified staff, Jamin Bailey, Title I Education Assistant at Grandview, Scott Brown, bus driver, Jonathan Colley, computer technician, Carla Combs, Title I pre-K Education Assistant at Grandview, Zach Glover, mechanic, and Natasha Redd, Title I Education Assistant at Grandview. Extracurricular staff, Travis Lichens, baseball coach at Huntersville Middle School. And then, recommendation for approval of language change of the HIV guidelines, and the HIV is the health insurance plan that we have negotiated many years ago for our maintenance custodian and bus mechanics. The intent, the original intent of that program was to provide a opportunity for staff members who were with us for many years and then retired, and at that point, would draw full retirement from perf, would be able to be eligible for the health insurance benefit. retirement for the PERF, would be able to be eligible for the health insurance benefit. Well, as it was written, it didn't really hold up to what we've wanted that. People could now retire early, and so that created an additional issue with that. So what we're doing here is correcting the language so that it is only available to those members from the maintenance custodial and bus mechanics that retire and get full PERF benefits. So that's what that is.
This was done at their request. We just took care of the paperwork for them and the language, the HI committee, which is made up of maintenance, custodian, mechanic.
Mechanic.
Thank you. Clarifying that. Okay, I would like to ask a motion to accept the personnel report.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mark. Do I hear a second?
No.
Thank you, Chris. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now is the time for public comments. Persons wishing to make the board aware of suggestions, ideas, and or comments may address the board at this time. Comments which involve personnel or students must be discussed in private. Seeing none, we'll move on to report items. Superintendent's Discussion Group Report. I know we don't have really superintendent discussion group report except for committees, I'm just going to briefly say that as you heard through some correspondence, you will be receiving tonight, don't leave without a copy of the evaluation form for the superintendent evaluation. And also keep in mind that in February, we have an executive board meeting for the meeting.
I haven't heard any feedback, so that's something...
Oh.
...just scheduled, but my proposal was an hour before.
Just want to put out a reminder to everybody.
Yeah.
Okay.
That work for everyone?
Yes.
5:30 on the 12th of February. Okay, we'll plan that then soon.
All right. Principal Director's Reports. Director of Human Resources Report.
Director Finance Report. I just want to thank a couple of groups. First of all, Maintenance Team and Custodians for working real hard Monday morning to get ready for school. We ended up having to cancel, but that's okay, but they did a good job. Appreciate that. And I also want to share with you, the county commissioners have been so supportive of our projects. They waived the building permit fees related to the solar project, and we also attended the meeting today, and they waived the building permit fees for the field house. And that is huge. That has saved the corporation a lot of money that we will, you know, be able to put in there. So I really want to thank that group of people for, you know, recognizing minutes for the building, the community, the field house, and for waiving those fees. So if you see the commissioners, be sure you thank them.
Janie, can I ask, is that, is it common that you or somebody from administration attends commissioners' meetings regularly, or is it only in certain circumstances?
No, we just, Brian asked to be put on the agenda.
Okay.
I was not available to go with the solar project, so Scott went with Brian on that day. Today, Brian, myself, and Mike Ship from Fanning and Howie were there, but they did hesitate a bit.
Yeah.
So it's great for us, for the project, and for the kids.
Right.
Has this happened before? Have they waived, has this been something with other construction projects that we've had, that they've waived the fees like that?
No, but I don't know that we've asked before.
Oh, okay.
A lot of times it's just built into the cost of the project, and our first, for it to resonate for us on the solar project, it was not built in, and so...
Wow.
Something they didn't have to do. We appreciate it.
That's correct.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay, Assistant Superintendent Report.
I'm going to pass.
Okay. And lastly, Superintendent's Report.
I won't pass. I apologize, but I want to echo what Janie said with Brian and his team who are maintenance custodian, and then also our bus drivers. It's, you know, I, we take very seriously our students' APN. They're not easy calls to make, but, you know, I know that our drivers are out there. We're running, they're out there, and it's sometimes tough situations when the roads haven't been plowed as well because there's so much blowing, drifting. So, you know, our drivers do a great job, and I want to commend them, and Darrell, and also want to welcome Mike Beck.
Hey.
He's doing really well, and we're all thankful that he's back here full-time again, and...
Like a bad pen.
Yeah.
We'll shut you up.
I attended with Trent Liggett, a safety conference sponsored by the Indiana School Board Association Friday, and it was really informative, and I think, one, it affirmed some really good things we're already doing, but there's also things that we can do better. We were able to listen to a couple legislators talking about some of the things being proposed out there at the state level, and then heard some information about, it's a visitor management system. If you've read anything about Richmond, they just implemented one called Raptor, and we had a grant that was filed where we had some money approved through a state grant where we can use that to put in a system at our school. So that's a task that has been given to committee to look at how we can keep our kids safer with who's coming into our building, and it will run an automatic check on them to see if they're on the sex offender registry when visitors come into the building. So a lot of districts are moving to that, so that's, I think that will be another positive step for us in keeping our kids safe. So that's something that Janie's been communicating with a couple of our staff members, working on some ideas and looking at the best program for us. So I wanted to share that the safety is always in the forefront of what we're trying to, the same as this CHS construction with, you know, enclosing that courtyard and really being able to lock down that campus and keep the kids safe inside of it. So, and I think that's it.
Okay, for the good of the cause.
I'd like to welcome Dennis. Glad to have his service on the board, glad that Mike's back.
I wanted to say a couple things. One, thank you all for your interest and willingness to come to the legislative breakfast that didn't take place. I want to thank Bob for putting it in the paper a lot, which we are trying to reschedule, and I know our legislators probably aren't listening, however, there were, there were a few glitches that occurred, but I will say, I got to talk to each of them personally, and their interest in education and in hearing what we all think is pretty high. They did say it was unusual to do one so early in the year because they don't have a lot of the bills before them. Some of you should have received an email that, from ISBA, about all the bills that have been now introduced that no more can be introduced, and there's a lot of education bills in there, so. But I would put a shout out also to the legislators for being so gracious to me in this attempt to try to pull this together, and hopefully we can do it again, and thank you to all of you for your interest, so.
I'd like to give a shout out to Director of our maintenance of buildings. Couple weeks ago, there was a power outage out here, and unfortunately, I was in the weight room when that power outage went off. I guarantee you can't see nothing. And after several bruises and stuff, running and stuff, trying to find my phone, the swim team was in the pool, and everything was just handled so well. I mean, he was out here like lickety-split, and so he did a bang-up job. I think it was the power station out near Fayette Central or something, but...
The squirrel.
The squirrel.
Oh, that squirrel.
Yeah, squirrel. But he did it well. It went well. Few screams from some of the girls, but other things.
Probably would have been me. Anything else tonight? Okay.
You wait all morning.
I'll look for a second. Thank you, Andy. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Meeting at yard. Thinking about you, Warren.